I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everyone. So, roll call, we have all three commissioners present, Michelle Morris is present, Josh and I will be attending shortly. One thing you may not know is when I first started here, everybody thought it was funny they messed with my pins. Actually pulled the guts out and whatnot, so, yeah, you remember that? So additions, deletions to the agenda. We need to add number three loan agreement with the sanitary project over sail away. Want to add those documents under, let's add it under unfinished business. Call it KDAG loan three documents.
And then I think an executive session with Josh.
Yeah, we got a couple of deals here, but I will need to add the agreed upon procedures report with Lloyd Group for the, I believe it's for the upcoming audit, or budget. Half, and this is for the audit. Yep, this is for, so to assist you with the respect, proper cutoff between county treasurer and new county treasurer, elected to the offices of July 12. Okay, we'll add Lloyd Group under new business. Documents. Any other paper? Okay, we will add a, we better have fifteen minute executive session with all three commissioners. Michelle Morris. And Josh and I. For attorney client. Does that cover what you're?
Uh, yes.
Anything else I'm missing?
Uh, did you add Centric?
Uh-huh.
Centric?
Oh, sorry, we need to add Centrienter. We're gonna put you in between road and bridge and health department. Century update. Anything else I'm missing? Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
So moved.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. Public comment, anybody here propose a comment? Unfinished business, KDAG loan documents. This is the amendment number three to the loan agreement, two signature pages for the records project are enclosed for review. This third amendment increases the amount of the loan by four hundred thousand resulting in a total loan amount of one million five hundred forty eight thousand four hundred forty-five dollars. Acceptable, please sign both copies, keep one copy of county record, return the other copy of the two signature pages. Sewer district number one. Let you look over that.
That's the sail away sewer district number one?
Correct. Yep, this is that pipe lining project and retention pond, right, Ryan? They started on that at all yet?
They have not started yet.
And it's just added to the existing?
Actually, that one was actually supposed to be started last August, but there was a holdup until the lead went into there. So, Ben should be able to get somebody on it pretty quickly, so. Because we had to push some of our inspections back a little bit to get to where they were getting to a single pond, so.
This is probably one of the longest projects I think I've ever seen. It's been going on a long time, for the nature and the size of the project.
The third phase of it, it has been a long going. I think the first phase of the actual stuff probably started in fifteen.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Wow.
That was foot lining, some of the bias, and then they went through, and they re, I think that was on the top side. And then they came through, and they put in the new pump stations that were out there. And so that was, that was either the base point, it was too, that was before I was here. Yeah, that's just what I found from looking back.
Do you have a rough estimate of how many miles of pipe is actually underground there?
I don't know much.
Can't be that much, can it?
I would think so.
How do they have it all in here?
There's two copies.
Well, and they've got the, says, a new resolution meeting minutes, so. They wrote the resolution?
You know what, it's right there.
So do we have to call a separate meeting, because there's, it says excerpts of minutes of a meeting of the governing body of Osage County Sewer District number one?
I don't know if we're gonna need a separate meeting.
Do they just put the minutes?
The governing body of the district met in a usual place.
And if we need to, we can just separate, it might be a question for Josh.
Yeah, because they actually listed it that it's with Osage County Sewer District and the state, it doesn't say Osage County, even though we own the sewer district or whatever, but it.
Probably just would want some excerpt of the meetings that, specific to the motion made or whatever, motion to sign. Stat sheets.
Yeah, I think Josh is gonna have to look at all this, because they wrote all the documents, so I guess we need to have them read. To make sure, it always makes me nervous when other people write that.
Does this change our, the payments, or does it just change the life of the loan?
It, yeah, increases the loan amount by four hundred thousand, so that'll stretch out the payments a little further in the time. And I agree, and Josh obviously should be reviewing that, but I wanted to get it in front of you guys who are aware, and then when it gets here, we'll hand it off to.
So on that one, did we have that figured out, that part? Was that part of the due structure or something like that?
Yeah, that's part of, uh, we kicked that around on how those fees are collected, they have a special.
Okay.
That one, that took a lot of work, for some reason, to figure out how they pay that. But that is something that we will need to talk about when we get to the, or the end of the project, just to make sure it's evaluated, make sure it's enough.
Yeah.
Well, and make sure it's being collected and distributed to that fund. That's the question I've had for the four years, is because there's all, there's a couple extra funds that are listed in our budget, and then they're empty. And so we're like, should this be separate from just the regular sewer district expenses versus the loan for the project and the extra taxes collected for that, so that way?
Yeah, yeah, it's got, shit, they make sure it matches on the front end, but we probably oughta make sure it matches on the back end.
Right. Which we have a budget for, we have line on here that dictates, you know, where the dispersment, so the dispersment goes into it, comes out of it, and that's all it's supposed to be. And then his maintenance stuff is on a separate line. But then we go to make, you know, payments. I think we have a line for payments, don't we? When we pay the loan off, when we're making the payment to the loan, have we not created that line?
Well, there's already two in there that we could use, we just never determined which one we need.
Well, but. I don't wanna use the dispersment one that's for the project, I don't wanna use that as the payment. Unless the project's completed, it'll be confusing. We'll create a line that's just for that payment.
Kansas Burn Hill, acting on behalf of the state of Kansas, form of opinion of municipality council. He's supposed to sign that specifically, huh? Josh is?
Josh, he said. Yeah, it's a template.
So then he's supposed to have something on that? He's got work.
He said he'll be here, he's just running a little behind.
Is this a revolving loan fund that jumps up toward the, you have balloon payments at the end, or is it all just?
I believe it's.
There's an amortization schedule.
Yeah, there's a new resolution schedule letter, but I believe it's just payments.
It's like two, three pages.
Till it's done.
Yeah. Yeah, revolving fund, yeah. It's not so bad. Just takes forever to date off.
And it falls on very small group of people.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean.
I don't know what the other option is there, though.
Yeah, it's really hard.
So is your excerpt of minutes, huh? You have your template for that?
Yeah, that's everything in it, everybody will need reservations in there.
Fill out the lines.
That's why I said, they've written it all, so I would like Josh to read it all, since someone's really.
There's one page, looks like he has to sign on, they filled out his own opinion for him.
That's not like, just give it to him, he needs to read it all.
Yep.
All right, clear as mud?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we'll leave that for Josh. Mr. Fine?
First off, I have two permits. This one's with the MediaCom, it's their subcontractor, we had filled out that and had MediaCom come in and do separate permits for central space in their subcontracting. So this is another subcontractor, MediaCom, and this is for in Carbondale, on Long South Main Street. Home back to North, it's like, I'm not having. It's just a little scratch there, so they're gonna do some of the buried, some of the material on this portion here. It's just a little more up there, you can see it, it's so small. So I would like to approve this.
Yeah, I didn't try to expand it.
It's just a long, um, to be gathered.
What is it, I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
It's by Robby.
I had to start a little mid, those buried fiber area.
They say we had approved all this before, it was all MediaCom, and this is sections that they're having to re-permit that I requested from them, because they were getting other subcontractors that weren't them. And so I request, requested them to fill out any permits.
Put different names on it.
Yeah, all those names that they, that way we can keep our miles straight.
They didn't name this up, they named Mercury Broadband.
It still didn't name Mercury on there.
It still shows Mercury.
And then with, that is their management area and stuff, and this stays with the file.
Right, and I don't have an issue, whoever's doing the work and whatnot pulled the permit, I just, I didn't know if we were trying to have the contractor on here on the permit wise, or if it's okay to just add Mercury, no one's doing the project.
Yeah, because it's still their contractor.
Their contractor damages something.
Yeah, and the basic thing that I did to update those is, just so I had other contacts than what we had previously. I'm still using, Michael Momigui did all the original contract increments and stuff, I'm still using his and my contracts.
What other utilities run along that? If it's aerial, there's obviously electrical already there, is there any real water or anything out there?
I haven't imagined, we're going down there somewhere, but that would probably not be an arable, that would be private.
Yeah, most all that stuff's outside of the release.
I know East of Town, that's seven, seven five, that was five, East of Town.
When are they doing this? This is just getting a bit of a?
Yeah.
The seven's over here.
Yeah, mostly west of seventy-five.
They already did the work, or they're getting ready to do the look?
Getting ready to do some of it.
Okay, we'll just need a motion to approve the right away work permit between, or for Mercury Broadband of Kansas. At South Topeka Avenue, Main Street, North Kansas Street in Carbondale, section twenty-four, township fourteen S, range fifteen E. It is also understood to work under this permit, should be completed within a hundred days after date, this permit just approved.
So moves.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Can't believe you can read that.
And this one is for Dale Schwager, director of the utilities, city of Osage. I told him, because he was prepared to do it last week, I told him to go ahead and not hold up, because it's, they can come into the meeting. So this work is just about complete, if not already complete. But it's over by the airport, and that's the city of Osage, and it was just easy for under that black line over there. So they were in the process of having everything in a row, and I was like, I said, don't wait on me to get up for that, sign on this one, just go ahead and place the works. I said, because it'll take me a little bit to get it set up in the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anytime they're doing power, water, I try to go ahead and get them right moving, so we don't hold up the gas. Follow line on another thing, it's not near it is.
Critical, yeah.
Okay, I'll need a motion to approve the buried line permit for Dale Schwager in Osage City. For a bore under East California Street for installation of gas line to Twelfth Street in Osage City.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. More?
Yes.
Three of them?
Love it.
Who would you shake with?
This is a locate machine, I reached out to Rycom, I kinda gave us a heads up about it. That is the brand that I used to use when I was at Franklin County for, after we did, called in the locates and started the project, and we seen where the front line was marked out in Berthold. This enabled us to pinpoint.
Verify.
The front line was, or verify how deep it was, if it was under the Berthold. The crit, getting machines, the accuracy, um, I've used, used this brand for years. And, um, so I was wanting to get Osage County set up with a locate machine. It doesn't take all the guts work out of it, but it does help. It doesn't take all the guesswork out of it, but it does help, it's a nice tool to have.
Do we currently have one, is this replacing one, or is that just something?
Osage County's got it.
You got the divine and rods? You got the divine and rods?
Yeah, I've used those, but a little hard to see at the depth on those.
Not if you stomp your feet.
Yeah, if you can stomp your feet, well, it'll kinda cross, but-
It stomp as a foot.
Yeah.
And, um-
Yeah, the tone is actually pretty accurate.
I know.
I got the pressure-
They don't really like it legally.
With an extra coupler, um, and this would do more of the fiber style lines that have the loop in the pedestals, where you can flip the coupler over and it's still still in that signal.
You don't have to skin the wire back and try to get it.
Yeah, because that, on copper cable, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not gonna skin any kind of wire backer. Um, but we were working on two hundred fifty the other day, and the phone line was marked. It was Mercury, it was supposed to be to depth, well, when they went and ran that in there, it was actually only two inches under the ground. Um, if we hit that, we could demit for upwards of twelve thousand dollars in damages for that phone line. This just gives us another tool that we can hook on and verify if we can get in that ditch, or if we need to call them and say, you need to get your line out of here. You need to get it.
Well, just to make sure, this is, this does not take away from the people that are supposed to be calling in their locates. Doesn't take the liability away from the contractor.
You still-
That's just for us to double check.
Go for eight one one.
Yeah.
You still do your locates, you wait till it's good, you go out there, this is just a verification tool to make sure that your locator came out and located the line right. I've seen some that have been twenty-six feet off. When I hooked up my box to it, and when, or in the line, and they were, they were literally twenty-six feet off, because they just got out of the truck and they painted out a pedestal-
Marked by measurement.
Straight to the house.
Yeah.
Went out the pedestal and went down the dills.
Around the tree.
Up the driveway. And it's just another tool. It doesn't eliminate everything, nothing does, but it's a nice tool to have. They have came up quite a bit in price, um, but here is the price sheet. This has that coupler added. I think when I bought the one for Franklin County, we were just under three thousand dollars.
I think it's a great idea, I just wanna make sure that we're not, 'cause we don't do our own locates, the liability purposes of it.
That's what that system's doing.
Yeah, right. But I think that's great, I mean, you can keep projects moving, mitigate damages.
We can answer some questions, yeah.
Yeah.
And the reason why I go to Rycom, Rycom's not the best out there, radio detection is actually the best one out there. Um, radio detection is based on the East Coast. If you go to have any problems or warranty work on it, it will cost you six hundred dollars to send it in. And that is not them even looking at it, that's just to get it in their, uh, facility. Rycom is out of Kansas City. Jim Grimes that I used to deal with, if we had any problem with our locating machine, he said, bring it in, he could recalibrate it, and he would give us the owner and everything for it in Kansas City.
Four-year warranty?
Four-year one.
That's pretty good.
This is the updated piece that we have. This, this is just a newer version of what we got.
Same brand?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we use the same one.
It's a good machine, and, and it's, it's a pretty simple machine. It looks like it's kinda close to the style that I used to run with the eighty-eight hundred, um, that I used to run. It's kinda set up the same. And like I said, I added the coupler tool, just because of the fact we're getting more fiber.
Oh, yeah, it's everywhere.
And we have to do that, we have to check and make sure, um, at least we can know where it is and what that, and all that can do.
CFP, oh, four?
It's, have it. So, um, yeah, I want to show.
You're supposed to go grab a switch off of a Willow Vine or something, rather than hold it out there and watch, see if it dips down or whatever. Isn't that how it works?
Whenever it dips.
Could bounce us twice, that's ten foot or four, six foot or what, I don't remember the well.
Yeah, I don't really think that. I know, I mean, sometimes we have to use our witch and rods, and we don't do it on location, but-
Yeah.
We can go out, and when you find it, then you just stomp, and each stomp, and then open up, and I've done it. It's pretty wild, it gets pretty close. But if you have water, gas, and, uh, fiber all in the same area-
Yeah.
You don't know which one you're finding.
Yeah, so, all of our district water lines put in, back in the day, by the lowest bidder?
Yeah.
No tracer wire?
Oh, yeah.
All plastic.
All plastic. One of these days, you'll have a piece of equipment that'll-
They advertise there is, but it never works right.
Yeah.
For the money, it's a big guess. About every time I find it, I try to make a landmark, or plant a flag, or just do something, we, we're updating. I got them to do everything on GIS, you know, so, uh, we're due again this year to do some updating on some spots, and so they'll come out tack them for us and add it to our map, digital.
Good morning, sir. Morning! Morning, Governor.
Good printer.
You're supposed to get them over, 'cause you have a sign on it. Got it. They actually filled out your opinion page for you.
They tend to do that.
This sign right here.
Yeah. Probably oughta look into that. I think it's the same copies, just wanted to.
Okay.
I think, I could be wrong.
Yeah, you could.
Somebody had, uh, moved a paperclip really quick. But when they go through the trouble of writing everything out for you, like Heather said, it just makes you a little nervous what they actually wrote for you.
Let me see that again. Gotta make sure it's proved. Okay, so for all the grants, I will need a motion to approve purchase order number four zero six six, in the amount of four thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars, paid to Rycom for a locate machine with coupler, to be paid from the special equipment fund, road and bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
When do you get that, how, how, what's the lead time, lead time on those?
I think it's pretty quick.
Really?
You can get it tomorrow if you're going to Wichita.
Safe to summit?
Yeah, you're going to one summits tomorrow.
I don't get to go.
Yeah, I don't get to go either. Makes me feel better. But I do have all three of my name guides going.
Thank you, sir. You want that too?
Anything else, sir?
No, that covers everything.
Life's treating you all right?
Yes. Busy, um, we're taking down a salt shed, K Camp came out yesterday, looked at it, the woman got me. Right there in the yard, it got blew the back of it out.
Yeah.
So, we had the process started. Um, James from K Camp came and looked at it yesterday, and they're actually disassembling it to save us some money off the top
Yeah.
Having the contractor- I think that's gonna, um, twenty-four hundred dollars off the price. I was like, we're gonna do that.
Yeah. We've got the technology to, yeah.
So, so that's a process that we're doing right now. Um, we're getting really close to having the bridge out on Davis Road, all done. Um, I think we're actually on day forty-something of the project, of an eighty-day project, but-
Looking right up.
They're already writing the bridge.
Weather cooperated good, though?
Yes, weather cooperated very good, and, yeah, I think we're on day thirty-something of the project, of an eighty-day project. It's, it should be on the show. Um, we got held up a little bit on the Salt Creek Bridge, it was already supposed to be under project. They have several entities that have come out and wanna do a study on that bridge, make sure it's not historical.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's a whole bunch of stuff, but, uh-
Yeah.
Um, they're gonna do archeological study on it now, too, so I thought this should be done earlier in the project.
Yeah.
Like when you agree on the dollar.
Because they're gonna start it, start it March.
Yeah.
Actually, so I mean, move it over again-
Right.
Yeah.
In it, so, um, so that study is supposed to be this weekend, actually. That's where we're at on that.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
Uh, Josh, first order of business, maybe, maybe Brandon already filled you in, just review that, there, is there anything?
No, we're good to go. Um, the question is whether I need to transfer any of this over to our format, or if you wanna just- No, it's got this edge county, so this resolution you can do, is just stopping the loan amount, then I can just save from eleven one 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 right into one one five.
Yeah.
Um, and this, we've done this several times.
Right.
But if you wanna pass this resolution now, and- Just follow this.
Template.
Template for the meeting of what's actually presented.
Executes.
And, yeah, resolution. Michelle, do you have a resolution number?
Twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Okay. All right, can you do the registration for that? We're gonna have a first-hand score, we've opened a meeting. Resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the load agreement between Osage County Sewer District number one, Kansas and the state of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for the purpose of financing a wastewater treatment project. Establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection therewith, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the loan agreement. So we'll need a motion to approve resolution number two zero two five dash ten.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So, we'll have Brandon next to it. I almost spelled your name right.
It's S M I T H.
Their phone, chairperson declared said resolution in the past, resolution number? Ten, signed in through by a chair. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Sure is that portion, and then-
I think we need to move to, approve the signing of Osage County office, third amendment to the loan agreement. And in that packet, did it say, I think you said, some signs that are in Sewer District number one?
Yes.
Yeah.
You said it's a board.
Yes, as Osage County's Sewer District number one, we are, commissioners are.
So then, uh, the motion would be to approve the agreement and offer as the chairman's sign.
Motion on the table.
Is that a so moved, what I said?
I said motion on the table, so.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
You're just the middleman in that deal, huh?
Right. I don't really want a motion to approve myself signing something, I don't know. Oh, it looks good, well, it's just your signature.
Did that sheet require you to sign it, or you just, uh?
Yeah, I gotta transfer it over.
Okay. Keep what you needed?
Yeah, I made it all. I don't know, I don't like signing stuff.
See.
Okay.
You paid for your degree, you wanna use it.
Pass that back to Mr. Josh.
And that, and you got the resolution.
Yep, we passed it on to Michelle.
Okay, I'll get my letter drafted, and then go to Michelle.
Very good. Century, I think, you can check, go first, is she alone there? She can, if you got the time, yeah, come on up.
Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, we came up with this last week, where, uh, one of my staff came in and was not able to get in our here. Um, and then we found out that they had the central link room, had removed it in overnight after hours to do so on the computer. Um, not okay with that. I don't agree with that. I have never seen a contract or anything that, um, we have with them, and in order to protect our HIPAA rights, um, of our patients, I think that we need to at least be able to give permission for them to go into our computers. Them going in without our knowledge is, in my opinion, never okay. I'm in the Department of Health Department, I think we should have to give them permission, understand why they did it, they said it was to interrupt our services, et cetera, but we can, we can manage to do some updating if that's needed when they get us, when we do that. I just feel very strongly about that, I have asked, there's two computers that we don't even own, they're owned by the state. We don't have any agreements with the state between them and the state for them to be on those computers. Um, I also have requested for their permissions to be removed from our staff computers. And honestly, I really don't think that's fair. I want, if they need to do something, I want them to have my permission, or one of my staff, get them permission to come in and be on our staff or our computers.
Well, the industry standard in what they did was not, um, outside of that realm. I viewed the emails that were sent back and forth, and I have no issues with what they did. The only thing that I would say to the center is that, you know, sending a heads up that your people are gonna be doing work in that evening is, is to me, what we talked about previously. We need to maintain that practice. I understand what you're saying, but these guys do it for a living, and they're not outside of what they're doing. And we, as a commission, contracted them, so they have the permissions that we gave them. So, we're not gonna do this dance anymore, we've already had the big deals, we had a problem over in that office. If you guys have issues, you brought it up, you brought it forth with them, they addressed that issue, and they were not acting illegally or outside of the realm of what they've been contracted to do.
So basically, you're saying that you're going- So basically, you're saying that you're going to ignore the HIPAA law?
But we're not ignoring the HIPAA law and they're acting within their, right.
Well, here's what I would say with HIPAA. I'm assuming with tech companies like yours, you deal with a lot of sensitive data, whether it's health, finance, personal data. And you know what the laws are and what's required of you because you do this in multiple entities. And HIPAA is to protect patient data. I mean, we deal with that at our facility with our little bitty business. But that's what companies do, is they deal with entities that have sensitive data. And one of those things is to protect the data, right? Protect.
Correct, yeah. I mean, we should ask by regional healthcare institutions to perform HIPAA audits and do, um, security reports for those types of audits, with healthcare in particular. It comes from HIPAA regulations, but even software providers like Epic are requiring those types of audits because Epic software is a bit under some criticism because their systems have been compromised and so now they're requiring their software, the, the companies using their software to do these audits, so it's something we're all familiar with. Yeah, we contract them. And just some of those lawyers' offices, other government agencies, um, like this, like Target, that have a lot of sensitive data, yeah, that's sort of the name of the thing.
Do you sign a business associate agreement anywhere else?
Uh, you have a non-disclosure agreement on file or obviously you don't.
No, I know, but the business associate, I think would cover, um, IT services, cause within HIPAA, I'm sure you have many different business associate agreements with different firms with that. Just examples, I'd kind of go looking at our attorneys, CBA firms, consultants. I think that wouldn't hurt as far as HIPAA compliance, um, to at least have that in place as well.
What's the name of the form?
It's a BAA, a business associate agreement, and it's just for, um, providers to have an agreement for the protection of businesses, associates that may have access or a need-to-know basis for access to some of that information. And since you're a contractor versus a county entity, that may be one way to just chore up stuff.
Do we not have that in their contract already and with their insurance documentation and with that non-disclosure? Is it just another layer of the onion essentially?
Another layer that I think the Health Department regularly needs to make sure that's in place before any contract or whatever. So, um, access to that information, um, it's kind of a standard federal agreement that is done to maintain compliance. So I, I think I could just prepare one, um, that would lay out the nature of the access to that, if that's what the commission is.
Oh, they also are supposed to have training for HIPAA, all what it means, what the regulations say, you know, what, what they're liable for. And there's also supposed to be actions in place for auditing, tracking, um, all that kind of thing of that information. So that if there is a question of a HIPAA violation, that you can go in and you can audit the record and you can see who accessed it, when, why, all that kind of thing. And that is just to protect the county from liability in the instance of something like that happening.
I understand how it works, I understand how it works, I really do. Um, we didn't hire this company, it's a five by eight company, they know what they're doing, so. If that's a, just another layer of the onion, it's something helpful to help kind of mitigate that. Do you have an issue with that?
I'll, I can send you the information on it, but it's pretty standard.
You think there would be an issue with?
So every time I hear something that I don't, I'm not familiar with, I'll, I'll may have somebody in the offices, so I'm sure we probably have a document similar to that, much like, uh, non-disclosure agreement that we have already, if you have something, I think so.
Um, I would like to request a copy of the contract that we have, so that I can review it and just be sure that whatever.
That you're in compliance.
Um, so if I can get a copy of whatever contract we have, um, I asked for it before and just, I don't know. But I would have to be able to review that. And if we do have a BAA, you know, news, any other thing that, you know, we're going to do, let's look at and be sure that we've got our boxes checked off, um, to be sure we're compliant with that.
I have utmost confidence that we follow. So if you could get her a copy of that, if you're there, if you may, that'd be great.
Just the communication is the, the driving. I mean, it's the.
We definitely, we, we just need to know when we're gonna go in. I, I mean, for lots of reasons. Simply, if they go in and like happened this time, my staff could be packing a huge.
Expectations, you can set a guard.
And then they tried to get in, it couldn't, we had a patient waiting, it took us time to be able to get a hold of them. You know, maybe we answered the phone, we had to be cautious, so it's just one of those successes. That's the first time that's happened. We have that happen.
If you can catch the snowball at the top of the hill, it doesn't get so big. You're going, yeah, I got you.
We don't have any threat of information.
Thanks. You ready?
Got you.
When we talked last, we were looking at a couple of departments in terms of maybe upgrading some computers. Public health was one that I was speaking with, we had a meeting after this meeting scheduled, um, to go over some of those options. And then I also met with Land Development and then, um, Frank at the Senior Center of Public Transport, um, about some different options. Franny asked that I ask y'all about this, so I, I came up with some different options. After speaking with her, she had two priorities, it was her computer, as well as the dispatch computer in the office attached to her. Those were sort of her priorities. And then, so for, for everyone, I gave kind of like a good and a better option. And a lot of them kind of pick, um, so for Franny, these were the different, this was the good option. I got the label on, on the top one, not this one.
Everybody's print's getting smaller. What's going on here?
Yeah, I know, I know, it is getting smaller. This is highlighted in color, I mean, obviously.
He can still see.
Right, and this is for, so this is for two.
Proved yesterday too.
This is for two computers. It's just a, a good and a better option. And so.
So here's the good and here's the better?
Yeah.
This is just two computers?
It's two computers plus, and so all the, all the options that I've provided to folks. The Dell computing that you currently have has three-year service contracts. These all have five-year service contracts. For us, and again, this is evaluating the priorities of each office, for her in particular. The two computers that she wants to replace are sort of the mission critical.
Yeah.
So those computers weren't to, were to stop working, it would have a huge impact on, on their ability to, to operate. And for the, for the dispatch in particular and running the, the transportation seems pretty critical to them. If the state's up and running, they had some issues with, internet went out for a while in the building and that was a huge disruption to their ability to do their job, so. The five-year service contracts just make sure that someone's out there fixing it that day as opposed to waiting two or three weeks to get the new computer installed.
Yeah.
And the only, the only sort of caveat to this is the, the increase in tariffs here recently hasn't had a direct impact on our distributors as of yet. Um, because all of this product is in the United States as opposed to still coming through the United States, students being part of it. So the impact hasn't been, hasn't been direct yet. The expectation from our distributors is that the diversity of SKUs is going to decrease as soon as our volumes are willing to be lifted. And the prices will sort of gradually go up to cheaper prices in that sort of timeframe. So that was the Senior Centers and then Land Development. Uh, Patricia said she was gonna come talk to you directly. I don't know if you wanted to go over these or not, uh, but this is just for a new computer for her.
Sure.
She snuck in.
Okay, so we gave old two bids, um, one.
I have copies, if you have an idea of the copies.
So, yeah, give me the second key.
Same thing?
So, this would be to replace my, um, tower and my laptop. So I have a laptop with, not the station, keep my screens. The Elite Book, more expensive one, has fewer issues. When I checked it out yesterday, after, anyway, after speaking with him. Yeah. The Elite Book, um, has fewer issues as far as overheating. Um, and considering the different requirements that I run on there. Um, I did check to see if that would be compatible with the ArcGIS for maps. Um, and just basically called a couple of people and said, hey, if I was running this program, and this program, and this program, is it gonna get glitchy, is it, is it? It could get glitchy down the road, but that's also a sign that, hey, it's gonna do, start making me worrying and wanting, um. The biggest problem I have at this point with this whole computer is in December, I came and asked for the encumbrances. So twenty-five thousand is to go for the information and the comprehensive plan. And twenty thousand was to go for maintenance and office upgrades. Can you guys approve those two? And it's still not in my budget for CSE. So I know I'm gonna have to check stuff, um, and I just don't want to go over the budget and go over that means.
The problem with the encumbrances though is, wasn't that the situation when they were supposed to be spent by date in March?
They're still processing things.
So is there a way she can, she still potentially be able to use those encumbered funds? Is that what we're looking at?
Seeing that I was aware that I had to use them by March.
And most everybody wasn't. It was actually kind of surprised to me that it made sense when it was explained. Cause you have to have the project everything going by certain.
Well, seeing as I have bids for some of my stuff that I didn't have the incumbents money in there, so like, well, I'm not going to trigger all these when I don't have the money.
Right. But with an encumbrance, it doesn't necessarily roll into the next year.
In there for now, they're in there.
It's, it's so that you can backdate those charges to the previous year. Otherwise, it'd be unencumbered cash and then it could roll into the next year and then it just disperses through the whole budget.
We make our year thirteen's what we use, so it's. So then, since they have not moved to the general fund, can I make these purchases and take them out of the general fund?
Yeah, if they've been, if that's the rapid wind, we can make that happen, but we have to make sure that unencumbered funds went into the general.
Cause I did get a battery already from the truck because it was ten years old. And Kina had to get jumped twice and I told her, just no good battery. I don't care at this point.
Ten years is impressive.
That's good, yeah. I don't see why we would have the issues finding the money to pay for this stuff. I don't, I don't see that there's, and we've got, I could, you know, we've got electronics in the general fund that we have to pull from. I don't see any issues with finding that, even if it doesn't come directly from your, I mean, it all comes from that general fund.
I understand that, but when I'm running out of budget, I want to keep my numbers and make sure anyone's approved.
Right. So, uh, which are you rather? I mean, obviously you're letting, letting the price, but we wanna make sure that you have what you need.
And that's.
You know that work's good, it's gonna last.
And yeah, you know me. I was looking at two for one until I caught a ground and I did believe that the third one, the line one, would be a better fit. Just because, um, it's known they're less likely to go to heat, um, taking it back to board between the house to work, a year of work, and other places. I just think it would last longer.
Are we gonna get five years out of it?
Yes. Well, I mean, you're guaranteed to get five years out of it. You're guaranteed that.
So that's where we can set our depreciation schedule up at five?
Five years. Okay.
And all these are falling within that, uh, your structure of targeted, you know, the, the red line items?
It's the top items. Hers in particular were identified almost immediately as underperforming work. They're within, so they're still within their, their service window.
Yeah.
But it's not a good, so she has a desktop that she, that she has in the office and then a laptop that she takes home when she needs to. So they're completely different, so it's, not everything's the same. It's a duplication of our services. So you're unenrolling one of those two devices. Um, it's, it's just an effort to, we talked about it last time.
Right.
Using your, the amount of computing happening here to reduce your tech, so this is the thing that's more efficient. Have a docking station so you can just plug in the laptop and it's the same here as it is at home.
Very good.
Yeah, that's what I use. I love it. Looks a little easier.
Just, yeah, just have one thing as opposed to.
I don't have to have multiple devices synced to one. I just pick this one up and go.
Yes, exactly.
And it's not a tablet.
And, and so with tablets in particular, um, Intel makes processors, right? AMD makes processors, right? Your cell phone makes processors, right? And so a lot of those new tablets are coming with the cell phone processors that don't get bigger correct over things like your printers in your office.
Right.
And so we take those types of things that are issues. And for Franny in particular, um, there was, the priorities there were, was hurting. So when we said, I was in her office for like an hour and a half last week, we were just talking and I was sitting there. There was a constant, nearly into the meeting, I guess, there were fan, fan line. It was a computer running the whole time. It was so loud, you could hear it through the.
It was like the boys' PlayStation.
Exactly, exactly.
We're not a PlayStation, I guess. It's almost grown up.
But anyway, it was, it was Franny's computer, it was the dispatch computer, those were the two critical ones. And then they have a login machine for AEP. Um, the keyboard doesn't really work anymore, so you have to smash it. And so that's what the keyboard is for, is for that, um, for that login machine for AEP. And, and those were sort of, once we were on site, once we looked at it and we talked for a while. They had a computer that, um, guests use in their apprentice computer, so it needs to, it's in sort of a library. And they have that login, the time clock computer, and they got it too, and that's kind of all they have. Otherwise, we talked and she's rewired the whole building over the last couple of years. Um, they had a lot of good work in there, so.
Yeah. So what is the difference that sticks out? I mean, I see one obvious and that's about it. What are the differences?
The difference is, one is, so one is the twelfth generation CPU, the other is a fourteenth generation CPU. They're both the same manufacturer date, but one's using a model you're prior, um, processing as opposed to the other one, which is too modest. So that's the main difference. And then, uh, other than that, they're the same. I think both, so when we make these times to quotes, we look at, we look at the computer that they're using currently. We evaluate the algorithms that they're experiencing over like the last fifteen, twenty, thirty days. We say, okay, the memory is constantly spiking, it's out of memory, it's under normal operation, right? And so we take that into consideration and we look at the application, the applications that are installed, or the minimum system requirements for those applications. What should we, what should, what is right size for their application? And that's the way to come with these. And so both options are better than the status one in terms of computing performance. One would just be slightly better than the other in terms of the processing power. I would say either option in this case is probably better for them.
Yeah, I can't imagine them running a bunch of, you know, like the mapping things that.
Correct, and that's why hers is special with like thirty-two device ramps and zero lighters.
Strike that from the record.
I think, for me, I would like us to indicate that it's supposed to come out of your encumbered. Whenever it's found or located or whatever. whenever it's found or located or whatever, cause that's what we mentioned.
So, under the fund, do you want me to put down?
I don't know what the encumbered fund is.
When you say encumbered, though, encumbered, you're supposed to have the actual list, part two that was approved. You don't go back and just say, hey, this is, that's.
And I did, I put down like the office upgrades, and I mentioned the Francis scanners. I even have like the battery, tires on here, electronics, smaller work tables, so that way I can spread out.
So, I would put encumbrances on it and then do a little bit of research today just to see if we can do it from there. And then if not, pull it from the general tech fund.
I, she never liked that, but yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
So, what?
Twenty-twenty-four encumbrances. And then with Franny's, I'm joining you in the same thing. Does she need to come and do that?
She needs to have a PO, yeah.
Do you want us to take her one, or just come?
She, she can just come in and fill one out and bring it with us. Cause we can approve it right now, when, you know, prove to move forward with the purchase. We just need to have to pay for it.
Gotcha.
We're not forgetting that.
Yeah, and then when she gets off the work, what I do, my encumbrances.
Yeah, she, she always does that. She knows what she's doing.
She's good at spending money, right?
Cause we're talking.
No, that's good.
So, what do you guys think of Franny's? Which one would you like?
I would prefer to go with the little gray one.
Yeah, I think so.
I'm always on the, what we need, maybe not bells and whistles.
Fair enough. Like I said, I think, I think either of us is, is better than the status quo. Once I realized that was first, if you're, I don't consider it, I don't just kind of insert.
So, Lily, just need a motion to approve that.
I move that we approve purchase order number four-zero-six-seven.
To who?
It's Century Business Tech for a new HP Elite Book, X sixty-G eleven, sixteen-inch Intel Core Ultra seven, one hundred fifty-five U, thirty-two gigabyte computer technology for land development.
And then the amount?
And the amount of three thousand nine hundred and nine dollars US currency.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yep, I moved.
I moved.
I was listening to the details.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
It's your motion, you make it, you want, right? Motion's been, all in favor, aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Very good.
What do you want to do on that?
Uh, I just went ahead and signed the original paper, and the directive is to bring the PO back. This'll give them time to go ahead and move forward on procuring the stuff, and then Franny needs to have a PO on the ledger. I can call you later. I'm gonna name this one the first signature.
On the tires, if you guys want me to do a separate PO, I mean, we shouldn't be at a two thousand, but still do a PO, so I can come in for the twenty-twenty-four encumbrances since I have them.
Well, if, 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 we need to find out first, make sure that that can be in the encumbrances, and if it's under the two thousand dollars, we just do.
Yeah.
And you can give us some shelter.
Yeah.
Just make sure that's where that can be. So, now, I will need a motion to approve the purchase of HP Pro, two HP Pro SF F four hundred G nines, HP Care Pack on site, five-year warranty, two, and two, I'm sorry, one HP two thirty-five wireless mouse and keyboard combo with the setup configuration installed fixed through Century in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
So, moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Very good.
So, next time, we'll just have a PO for that.
That's typically how we try to get to do it, is have the PO here ready to go.
Oh, you're ready.
Yeah.
You can't read that?
No.
I've tried to be a doctor when I was a kid, but the signature's the only thing I got.
There you are, sir. So, those were standard, the major, I mean, major issues from this last week to this week, I guess, just general updates were issues of land development. I feel like we had been putting our best before, trying to sort of act, we asked what she's asking for. I had a meeting scheduled with ten-thirty, so I was gonna come up and try to see what is, what we should, what else we should be doing, kind of, but myself, I talked to you about it yesterday, and, yeah. So, that's kind of, that was the biggest issue going forward.
I applaud your patience. It's not an easy undertaking, but something's been done a certain way for many, many, many years, and it's very difficult to change that, and I think you guys are doing a good job. I think you're trying to.
I appreciate that.
In the best way possible, so.
Appreciate it.
Sometimes it's frustrating, but you guys have been there, you've been pleasant, and you seem to get the issues resolved, if you find the problems. I feel like that's what we contracted you for, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Anything else?
I think that's kind of all we have this week, we're just kind of working through that top section, speaking with everyone, trying to outline our priorities. That just takes a little more time than I thought it would.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any questions, you guys? Galaxy's turn to sit in that seat.
I forgot to come up last week.
Yeah, it's okay. So, I came down mostly just to say that the remodel is done, and at least the first phase of it. And Franny came up last week, I caught Brandon and Heather both still down there at the end of the meeting last. You wanna get that?
I was wondering if I can get it to you, if I need to take it upstairs.
Uh, congrats.
Thank you very much.
And so, if you guys want to come up and take a peek, you're welcome to. I, uh, the, I was trying to see if there was one in here, but the fiber lines that run the network lines, you know, with the internet and all that, those two, none of those offices down there had it in there.
Cause it was storage.
Cause it was storage. And so, those guys are actually here today running those lines. I went ahead and just authorized this to be paid out of my budget. Historically, I've had enough money left over at the end of the year that I don't believe it should be a problem, so I'm just kind of, this is me saying, we're just, we're not, I'm not asking for personal funds on that. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we don't have plenty jury trials go. If, if we have an enormous amount of jury trials or something happened like that, that may put my budget into a different situation, and I'd have to come ask for a little bit of grace, I suppose, on the budget. For now, it's just gonna come out of the money, but they're, they're doing that today, and it's all done. We've got a little bit of cleaning up to do in sort of the middle section that I think I talked to guys about. That would kind of be a phase two project, to kind of get that into a functional space. But for right now, the damage is all done in one room, and the other room wall is all done, and it really looks beautiful.
It's fast.
They were so fast, and.
It looks way different.
I, when Brandon came up, I had pictures printed off of it before, because I just don't really think.
Yeah.
Appreciate how good it looks, and you don't remember what it looked like before, but they've got the carpet down, they've got a desk moved into the one office already, we gotta get the desk set up in the other room. Community Corrections has come over, I, that's what we kind of indicated the one office was gonna be for, and right now, they're located across the street. So, they came over and doubled looked it over yesterday. I, I think Judge Wine and the Community Corrections Director are gonna kind of enter into a little bit of an MOU for the use of the space, but then other than that, I think they plan to be in there full-time by July first, so they'll kind of start drastically moving, and they're gonna, uh, drastically, slowly, no care.
Methodically?
Yes.
Very good.
And then they'll be good, but I just want to, hey, thank you.
Nice, sir.
Let me get it done, so.
Thank you.
I'll take care of this.
All right. That's the end. What, am I missing something?
Nope, I was just gonna tell you, I'm a personal note, she'll have to get her certified copy from the Office of Vital Statistics in Topeka.
Okay.
So, once we submit this today, it takes off seventy-two hours for them to have that. That's what she'll have to have to get her jurisdiction's changed.
Very good. Awesome.
Margaret, if you can come up and make a quick disclaimer?
Will do.
Great, see you, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, then we have, let's see, technical corrections, we're gonna kind of push that to the last Lloyd group documents. This is the document says, "We have performed procedures enumerated below which were agreed to by OSH County Kansas Board of Commissioners and Management solely to assist you with respect to proper cutoff between the county treasurer leaving office and the new county treasurer elected to the office as of July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. OSH County's management responsible for county treasurer's office of OSH County, Kansas. This agreed upon procedures engagement was conducted in accordance with the testation standards established by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. Sufficiency of the procedures is solely the responsibility of those parties specified in the report. Consequently, we make no representation regarding the sufficiency of the procedures described below, either for the purpose for which this report has been requested, or for any other purpose." Procedure findings are, procedure one, review the bank reconciliations conducted as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, for all bank accounts of OSH County, ensuring the bank and bank balances are in agreement. Findings, the exception found as a result of applying the procedure, no violations of Kansas statutes were noticed during this review of the reconciliation process." Very good. Procedure two, I'm not gonna read all of them, there's a bunch of them. So, this is the agreement stating that they have done their job. And we need to sign off. I'll let you read that. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to take a brief recess.
Oh, that sounds great.
Restroom break, and then we can get through this, we'll get through PBC, this is Mr. Fred, so, Greg's joining us. Take a brief recess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't leave quite enough room between the door and the desk.
We're gonna have to do a single file line type situation where Josh comes out first.
How about another door?
There you go.
You can make it half size.
Anyway, no action taken. Again, the executive session. So, Michelle, if you would please add to next week's agenda under new business payroll discussion with departments. I'll just put departments that way so ahead and then assistant will show and so we have everybody shows either way. Okay. Bills, do you have reviewed the regular bills?
I am slowly getting through it. I printed it out this morning.
Can't believe it's so cheap.
Right.
I did have a question on some of these, on some of the appropriated funds. If it's over the 2,000, do we need to approve those?
Appropriated? That's part of the budget.
Well, it is, but since it's over the 2,000, do we need to do the voucher where we all sign those?
I don't think we do.
If it's in, within their budgeted authority or budget authority or whatever.
Well, they were signing on that adopted budget.
Right. And I think that policy that we have is a little silly.
It's our budget authority.
I mean, if you do that, I mean, if you, if you let them do their budget authority, then you, if something's messed up, then it's their, you know, then it's their fault for going over budget and it's not, oh, the commissioners keep spending all the money.
They have to answer to their constituents.
Well, and they should pay attention to their own budget. That's the whole point of having department heads and stuff is to have them pay attention to the budget.
Right.
Their own department's budget.
No, I'm looking for that.
Was that the only page?
That's it?
It was just now. Just the, they had a resolution 20, 25.
Yeah, there's something else to sign, maybe not.
It should be a hard copy somewhere.
Oh, I guess I could go in and fill this out and then the last one though.
We didn't leave quite enough room between the door and the desk.
We're gonna have to do a, I figured, we're gonna have to do a single file line type situation where Josh comes out first.
How about another door?
Heather, there's myself. There you go.
You can make it half size.
Anyway, no action taken, again, for the executive session. So, Michelle, if you would please add to next week's agenda under new business payroll discussion with departments. I'll just put departments, that way it's some ahead, and then the system won't show, so we get everybody shows either way. Okay, bills, do you guys review the regular bills?
I am slowly getting through it. I printed it out this morning.
Can't believe it's so cheap.
Right.
I did have a question on some of these, on some of the appropriated funds, if it's over the two thousand, do we need to approve those?
Appropriated, that's part of the budget.
Well, it is, but since it's over the two thousand, do we need to do the voucher where we all sign those?
I don't think we do.
If it's in, within their budgeted authority, or budget authority, or whatever.
Well.
Right, and I think that policy that we have is a little silly.
It's our name, they're budget authority.
I mean, if you do that, I mean, if you, if you let them do their budget authority, then you, if something's messed up, then it's their, you know, then it's their fault for going over budget, and it's not, oh, the commissioners keep spending all the money, you know.
They have to answer to their constituents.
Well, and they should pay attention to their own budget, that's the whole point of having department heads and stuff, is to have them pay attention to the budget.
Right.
Their own de, department's budget.
No, I, I'm looking for that.
Was it the only page?
It was just now. Just the, they had a resolution twenty, twenty-five.
There's something else to sign, maybe not.
It should be a hard copy, so.
Oh, I guess I could go in and fill this out, and then the last one though. Twenty, twenty-five, ten, wasn't it?
That sounds familiar. That sounds right, yeah.
That's my, that's the resolution, I just, I don't know.
I was doing the whole, cause that's the second copy, isn't it?
Yeah, but the resolution is just one.
My fault, I influenced your own there.
There I go.
Don't listen to me ever again.
Have you reviewed the bills at all?
Yeah, I looked through them earlier on.
Do you still have any questions?
I asked Heather a couple of questions earlier on, but.
I'm getting there, I just, I got it this morning when I got here, so I mean, it's fifty-five minutes.
I don't want to hear Heather do another second, though, this time, because she was, it was so.
Well, I would like to have looked through these before.
Yeah, it was so dismaying to hear her do it, so I don't think I can handle that again. It was crushing.
Well, kind of puts the meeting in a standstill, so.
On the PBC stuff. How much more, did you say, we're gonna keep that commission going?
Yeah, after it's all said and done. But we'll need to, we'll need to restructure it, I think.
Yeah, okay, that's what, I know. We had one of these type of discussions here, and said it was strange, and that's where we left it, I think, is what.
And if it, I mean, it should be just what it is, public, you know, whoever's doing the project wants to be involved with the public portion. Cause they don't have any authority to pay anything, or contract anybody, they just break, you know, they gather it everywhere. Some of it is us, it's kind of like, you know, land development, planning and zoning.
Yeah, no, I think that would be a better way for it to work.
I don't know what the history is, and why we can have a PBC, we can see good. I see a good reason for it.
I've been ducking, being assigned to that research project for three years.
What do you have, spineless or? I will, I will do the research, if that's necessary, I'd be more than happy to jump in there with you.
I mean, it came about just with this sheriff deal, though, with the new law enforcement center. We gotta be getting close to being done, I'm out of coffee.
If you're happy with it, then you can start stamping, and then we can.
How often have you ever come across one of these, that you said, oh, that's weird, and stopped, and?
Rare. I mean, there's been some questions here, there, but, I mean, they're certified by the people that do it, do the data. I don't know enough about it to say this is wrong.
If I start way over here on the edge, I'll leave plenty of room for you guys, right?
Oh, yeah. Did you get a stamp?
I don't know.
Probably should, I'm sitting in this chair, and you're gonna want it.
I can handle it, yeah, see, she says.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even notice that part.
I noticed.
You guys are all right. Well, I looked at the bottom, that was the one you were shooting me about. Well, I don't, I don't blame you for doing it. I wasn't such a busy guy, I should have been waiting more.
Did you hear her eyes roll over there?
Two full-pan gobs, pretty busy.
That's all.
It's not as busy as she, I, I'm not gonna take anything away from her.
I wish you would.
Well, I tried, but you won't, you won't give it away.
We're good.
You are, it's sort of tremendous, you know, I won't say that out loud, there's a lot of local room along the way. Yeah. Now, I will say, okay, since you asked that. You do have a question on one.
Oh, goodness gracious.
I just, that's one of the ones I don't understand. Ooh, well, that does raise a question, I think, I'm gonna talk with Lev, I'll let him, because that is no longer that person's name, has it? Or why? So, that's from his own, by a different person, and I know it, because obviously.
But what year is it, four is it? For a year that we go back to that?
Uh, well, it says twenty-four, yeah, but maybe that's not right then.
I don't know whether they were, one thing's may have legalism with.
Yeah, I guess the only question would be that, but.
Like I said, somebody else already looked through it, I mean, they processed it.
Right.
That's all I got here. You gotta get a collection of stuff for those.
Yeah.
If you keep it all on the table, then it keeps your cabinet pretty organized.
Right.
I see.
Looks nice.
It's a good theory there.
Like Tommy Boyd, he don't like the file counts, cause you have to open them. You can get them too. I don't know whether or not to take this as a compliment, to be super excited, or what, but this is idiot proof. And it's for us.
Us or you?
Us. We're in this together, man, you said it yourself. Okay, so I will need a motion to approve paying the bills in the amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-three cents. She's not gonna.
So moved.
You're lucky to get a second. Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That's great. She even smiles, she'll get you a beer.
I was just waiting for it, I was like. Ooh, I messed that one up, there's a weird signature there, I'm sorry about that.
That looks good.
Well, I was hesitant, because the top line was kind of missing there, and then, on that page, so, well, I should do that, but then I hosed it up.
You get a little bitty.
Sorry about that. And about halfway through, I just like this a ton.
Okay, now, I will need a motion to approve the tax rule corrections.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The bills free, the bills are free, taken. We have landfill application for Mr. Overholt, Louis Overholt Construction. Need a motion to approve the landfill account application for Louis Overholt Construction.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We have a payroll personnel action form brought forth by the treasurer, you guys get questions answered on that?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the personal payroll action form brought forth by the treasurer.
So moved.
Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Michelle?
Do we have an update on meeting minutes, or what we can do to help with that?
We'll see, we're almost there. That being said, if there's no other business, we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Whoa, that's twice in a row. Motion's been made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, y'all have a good week.